A little different than normal or from the past as far as our faith of allegiance and our prayer. We've invited some folks to help us in this, to St. Cheryl has some invited guests. Sandy, would you please handle our guest's prayers, please?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Reverend Wayne Anthony. He's through the Lake Park United Methodist Church and we thank him for coming. He's got his ladies in his presence.
Sandy, with my God present in this place, let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. In this time of regeneration, let us deliver us from evil, from the sin of the earth, and from the power of the Lord forevermore. Amen.
I'd like to introduce our fire and spores. They will present the flag. And once they present the flag, we will have our flashman, Air Force retired senior master sergeant, Lawrence Smith, who lives in the state of Lake Park. He will be up today.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all very much. Thank you. We get the meeting logged now. First, hold the agenda. The agenda is we're going to go over the minutes and the financials. Our first order of business will be the minutes from our last meeting. Counsel, would you share the draft of the minutes with me? For all the minutes of the January 30th. I hope y'all, if you want to read a lot of this, pass. Go. There's a lot of me. Yes, Mr. Lane? In the interest of time and what we have, covering this agenda tonight, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the minutes as written. January 30th. We have copies of the papers. Anybody want to read?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, a second. We have a motion that Lane said minutes. We have a second from Councilman Shumpert. In discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we've got now the minutes of the work session. The work session that was held on January 10th, 2012 at 6:30 PM, followed by declaring emergency meetings of the Lake Park City Council. Also on January 10th. Yes, Mr. Lane? I'd like to make a motion that we accept the work session minutes and the emergency meetings minutes as written.
I'll second the motion.
A motion on the fourth, Mr. Lane, to accept the minutes of both the work session and the special emergency meeting of Lake Park Council that was held on January 10th, 2012. In discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You down? This time we will go over the financial, the financial report. Financials ending January 31st, 2012. These financials are actually from January 4th, 2012 to January 31st, 2012. And let's, I'd like to ask if anyone has any comment or discussion on these financials as we look through them.
I have a question. Where were the new locks installed by RMS from '78 and '71?
The new locks were installed by RMS on the city hall, the civic center, and the public works compound, and Ms. Rance's house, what we call our short house, and public works office.
I see they also installed a fire department.
I don't know exactly what they did in the fire department. I know there was a code that was changed. There was a code that was changed. Mr. Baker, were there any other locks or changes inside the building?
Yes, they also rekeyed seats there.
The chief door was rekeyed and the building was refitted.
I see that there's evidence saved. That was something that was done for 13346.
The evidence saved is in the building over here, Councilman Shumpert. And evidence runs there. What did he do to that?
Chief Baker? Yeah, we had the deadbolt installed. The evidence has to be kept secure, so we had the deadbolt installed. Both access to it there.
He just had a patch and lock on it. And we put a deadbolt in there. Yes, yes, Miss Cheryl. Excuse me? I'm not going to start that again. I apologize. Yes, Miss Cheryl?
All the things that are on this list that are asterisks, all of these, I mean, it's just $2.20 and $0.10 short of $10,000 or bills that should have been paid in the 2011 budget that were taken?
Yes, ma'am. Everything you see in expenditures that has an asterisk there were bills that came from 2011 that should have been paid in December of 2011. And quite a $10,000 worth of bills that we paid in January 2012 that should have been paid in 2011. Yes, ma'am. That goes directly against our budget for 2012, and it should have been added to their work in 2011.
So these are past months? These aren't bills that were due in December, that were paid in January? These are the bills that were to further into 2011?
Those were bills of the latter part of 2011, Councilman Shumpert. And they were bills that should have been paid in December yet. They should not have trailed into 2012. You can see some of them with asterisks on them, just, I think there was some. And there's still some more out there. There's some tax, some tax penalties out there. And there's a few more that I understand are forthcoming. But there was the gas bill. There was some insurance out there. There were some repairs on some automobiles for the police department. This Mr. Lane's bill. But it totally, there were a lot of them that were decent, like Sarah, $10,000.
We were sitting on those doors. They didn't come in late? Those were the ones that were sitting on?
We came in on January 4th, and I don't have any explanation why they were billed for not paid in 2011.
So the bottom line is, is our budget's going to be short for this year for this amount of money and whatever conditions coming in that we don't have yet?
That's correct, Miss Cheryl. As it stands right now, we've been penalized right at $10,000 in our budget from prior year. We, in the general fund, in the general fund, we, on the December, on the December 2011, financial sheet that the council was given, it had in the general fund a CD of $102,324.7. That, under the name of the city of Lake Park, that CD, that CD that we've got is $102,375, which is some difference there. But anyway, there are also three more CDs for the city of Lake Park that were not reported on the December 31st financial sheet. So what, what I'm saying... I need something that I think I know. We have, uh... 12/31/11, a CD was reported for $102,232.74 in the general fund, the city of Lake Park. On 1/31/12, there were four CDs totaling $145,983.7. That's a difference of $44,865 plus. On the December 2011 financial report, the cemetery stated it had a CD of $39,941.97. On 1/31/12, the cemetery had cemetery CDs totaling $28,404.36. That's a negative $11,537.61. On the December 2011, Water Department, the enterprise fund, it stated CDs of $32,282.20. And on 1/31/12, the CDs with Water Department on them and that we have in our possession in the safe deposit box we got, totaled $55,751.22. So that's a, that's a plus of $23,469.02. So the difference in the CDs that were reported on 12/31/11 and what we account for on 1/31/12, the difference is $56,797.24. On 12/31/11, the accountability, the accounting said total money's on hand on December 30th, 30th of 2011, of all funds. That was all funds, everything, SPOS funds, everything. It had $320,691.43. And we, on 1/31/12, all funds that we account for, $417,369.42. That's a difference, that's a plus of $76,677.99. On 12/30/2011, the past financials, it stated that there was $340,691.43, all monies. The day we started business, forgive me for using that word, the day we started business on 1/4/12, the next day after that first meeting, we looked at the cash on hand, primarily the First Day Bank. There's another CD over at the bank, used to be at Park Avenue Bank for about $1,800. But on 12/30, the all monies was $346.91. And on 1/4, the next day, the money in the First Day Bank, including checking, CDs, everything, all monies, was $397,971. That's a difference of $57,279.99. These numbers are correct. These numbers have been verified. The CDs are in the safe deposit box, Miss Cheryl and I have put them there. The money is in hand. But the accountability, we'll have to talk about later, if I can get it. But your financials, if you're looking at as of January 31st, 2012, two all monies, general fund, corporate fines and court charges, we did in the past, in the past, the, our municipal judge, Carl Rogers, has requested that the city have a separate account for courts and fines and court charges, which wasn't done. And we listened to him and we went and opened a separate checking account for courts, fines and court charges. So if you look at our closing ballots in the general fund of $12,172, and you add that $4,500, you know, our closing balance is actually more than what we reported last time. But we separated that out for the judge and doing it the way it's supposed to be done. But cemetery fund, the checking and the CDs, all monies there, and enterprise fund, the water, and then SPOS funds. We've got $2,762.60 on SPOS funds, still being held by Alhams County. And we've got $63,748.88 SPOS funds that's in the checking account at the First Day Bank. The general fund revenue, you can see the revenue of $29,599. The biggest one was sales tax. There was $5,300 worth of what the cemetery locks, SPOS funds. On SPOS 6, $7,163.66, and that went into the SPOS 6 account. But your expenses, we've got it broken down there. And when we get our new software and start doing business, the new way, we'll have D and L's and balance sheets on all this for us to read, charge some accounts. But you can see there that we've broken it out, expenses on personnel by the elected administrative law enforcement, the maintenance judge, fire protection force. And then our expenditures, you can see we've broken that out by administration, law enforcement, fire department, our maintenance department, water department, and our courses and our cemetery. But our total expenditures from January 2012 were $25,927.83. And all that $25,927.83, $9,997.99 that was billed that should have been paid in December, December 2011.
We had an actual expenditure from January, well, it should have been January, just shy of $60,000.
Yes. I've added to these reports. And we have a report here, we have a report here which was a spreadsheet on what we had exactly on 1/4/12. That's the first thing we did. That's the first thing we did with time, with runway. But we've got another report here that I gave y'all on the unpaid property taxes, or past few property taxes that are still out there. And we've had, we've had quite a few folks came in and paid their property taxes. That's where that last meeting went. But anyway, we still have, as of January 31st, and I don't know if anyone else has come in, but on January 31st, we had total due in unpaid property taxes of $26,187.99 that's still due to the city of Lake Park that we due on December 20th, 2011.
The asterisks by the past due, is that the note years? The thing, like they're past due one year or two years?
I think those are some that the former mayor, some people, the former mayor had made verbal agreements, states on here, verbal agreement with so and so. I'm not going to call them. Paying $50 per month. And I think there's two or three of those deals, two or three of those deals out there. To my knowledge, to my knowledge, there was one, there was one of them that made their payment in January. And there's two of them that even though they didn't put on payment schedule or that are not fulfilling their obligation. But we've got, we've got a lot of property taxes still out there. We're going to have to make some decisions on how we're going to handle that. Is there any other questions I might have asked concerning the financials for any council?
Are these past due tax bills on the agenda for further discussion tomorrow? If not, I'd like to see that on the next agenda. Because how many people are paying taxes that some people aren't?
We can, we've got on the agenda that, Miss Cheryl, the administrative executive standard report. That's kind of a, kind of a catch-all, if I'm correct. That's kind of a catch-all. But if you'd like to talk about it some night, we can't vote on anything. But if you'd like to discuss it some, while you got folks listening.
We'll be time to think about it.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Lane?
Wouldn't, on our agenda, under 2012 insurance coverage, wouldn't we be able to discuss this matter under that topic?
The 2012 insurance coverage?
Yeah.
That's the issue. We've got that coming tonight. I've got a representative from Black and Griffin here tonight. Yeah, he's here, just going to talk to us about something we're going to have to discuss. Our property and casualty insurance. And we, you know, in the past, I think we talked about some of the value of some water titles and things like that that you just worked on. And we've also got to discuss, you know, our workers' compensation, which is we need to pay entire amount of that. But there's an option to pay 25% down if the balance goes up, I think in June, February.
And will that discussion also include the lottery, the nurses going up?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Lane?
I'd like to make the motion that we accept these financials as we read and as they are written.
There's a motion on the fourth, Mr. Lane, that we accept the January 31st, 2012 financials as stated before.
Do you have a second on that motion?
There's a second by a member of the chair. A motion and a second to any more discussion.
Very thorough, the point.
Motion by Lane, accept the financials, second's right. Motion, motion by Lane, accept the financials, second by Chair, all those in favor say aye.
I understand.
The director of the flag, there's, Cheryl was smoking, and Blain said aye to those. Yes, member, Schiller abstained. Okay. Next item on the agenda, citizens to be heard. If you will, if you will, please, come up and please state your name, your address, and I would like to also ask you to state if you're a citizen of Lake Park, Georgia, or if it's not, and please, we're going to be courteous, we're going to be courteous on both sides. And we ask that everyone, in the interest of time, if there are people that want to talk about the same subject, if you can, get one person to speak for you. And we're going to allow you what time that we feel like you need. So anyone, yes, come forward, please.
My name is J.C. Spring Carter, five oh five, to that row. At the last council meeting, I witnessed some of the most inhumane, unethical, and possibly illegal acts that I've ever seen happen at a Lake Park City Council meeting. When newly-elected council members, Sandy Sherrill and Russell Lane, along with newly-elected mayor Ben Futch, quickly voted to fire City Clerk Ann Peterson, police sheriff chief Burke Ruffin, and fire chief David Brown. When asked why by the other two council members, they remained silent and would not state any purpose or reason for their actions. My opinion is that these are acts of vengeance and the ability of the mayor to control two members of the council. David Brown has built the fire department up to its present high level, and most Lake Park citizens feel that he's the best fire chief the city has ever had. Chief Ruffin has almost thirty years of service with the city, and his performance has improved in the later years. He only wanted one more year until his retirement at sixty-five. City clerk Peterson has over thirty years of service with the city. She always wanted a few months over four years until she could retire. Four's early retirement will substantially reduce her retirement benefits. Over the years, Lake Park has invested a lot of money in her training. She's certified in a number of areas, including being certified as a municipal court reporter. Ms. Peterson is one of only twenty-three city clerks in the state that have been designated master city clerks by the University of Georgia, that she voted to fire and are now advertising for a new city clerk. It'll take years and money to train a new person up to Ms. Peterson's level of excellence. I believe most Lake Park citizens are very unhappy with these pre-planned acts, and are disappointed that Ms. Sherrill and Mr. Lane would allow someone else to tell them how to vote. Remember, at the political forum before the election, Ms. Sherrill promised transparency and to vote the will of the people. I hope Mr. Futch, Ms. Sherrill, and Mr. Lane realize they have destroyed part of three people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you, comments, Mr. Carter. Anyone else on citizens to be heard? Yes, come forward, Mr. Blain.
Forverreman four hundred Marionette. I request this council to look into the fact that the water missing was used by Mr. Futch. I have evidence here that I will turn over to an outside agency to show that this water was used and not reported and not metered as required. I would ask that the council vote to turn this matter over to an independent agency like the GBI or the Sheriff's Department, and since Mr. Futch has declared that he has not done anything like that, it'd be an if, it would clear his name. Thank you.
Thank you, comments, Mr. Blain. Anyone else on our citizens to be heard? Yes, Ms. Schiller? Yes, please.
My name is Dr. Julie Schiller. Yes, I am a resident of Lake Park, and my address is three twenty, back forty drive. In order to stay within a three-minute limit, I have prepared a list of concerns which I will read, and do not want to stop and discuss any one of my items. Number one, if these meetings are going to continue to have high attendance, then we need to move the venue to an area that allows any citizen to attend. To deny any citizen the right to attend violates our individual right to participate in the process. Furthermore, saving seats for open meetings may be construed as a misfeasance when it is the mayor or council who is doing the saving. I have a concern. During the January third council meeting, it was obvious by the prepared list of names and the speed with which the standing motion was made, that there was collaboration prior to the squaring in. While we'll take a lawyer to decide whether an unsworn individual has violated any sunshine laws, once sworn in, one of the members may have in fact violated them since she was already a council member. I have a concern. At the January third meeting, there was a quote given to the public that the fire trucks cost several hundred thousand dollars, where in fact they cost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. I would like to see the financials, which back up the facts you claim. Otherwise, I consider the quote to be a lie, and the deliberate actions of these elite citizens into thinking there was reckless spending. I have a concern. At the January third meeting, three of you voted to not be appointed city clerk. As a result, electronic checks that are being written by hand, the computer programs are not understood, and the city no longer has a competent clerk. Furthermore, the wife of the mayor is now in city hall assisting in the office. She is seeing personal information on citizens of which she has no right to access. I have a concern. The mayor has been going through records and papers and has therefore stepped beyond his defining duties as stated in the city charter, Division Two, Section two point two one. I have a concern. In the city charter, Division One, Section two point one four prohibitions, it states that neither the mayor nor any other member of the council shall vote upon any question in which he is personally interested. When certain city council members voted Mr. Whitfield and Mr. Beasley to two boards, they violated this law as they are personal friends, as evidenced by their public socializing. Also, the mayor violated this law when he voted in this of Tim Baker, as he is a personal friend, as evidenced by the multiple publicly displayed acts of friendship. I have a concern. Mayor, this is directed directly to you. You had your lawyer write and send a certified letter to my husband, demanding an apology and threatening him with litigation in the past. Recently, you approached him and all but threatened him. I want to know how you plan to work, and if we leave my husband when you have displayed nothing but a bullying attitude. I have a major concern with you.
Thank you, Mr. Blain. Order, order, please. Anyone else on citizens to be heard? Mr. Whitfield?
My name is David Whitfield. I reside at two oh four Park Street in Lake Park. I didn't come here to speak tonight, but I feel obligated to. I believe it was in two thousand and nine that our current president told us elections have consequences. That's a true fact. And how consequences even in Lake Park. We've had a full in for our election year, the votes of the county, everybody seated around this table was elected by the citizens of Lake Park to serve, and what they want to do to serve. I think it's time we, the citizens of Lake Park, with this backbiting and backstabbing and living vicariously through the newspaper, through the chamber of Congress, to put aside our petty differences and get behind this elected council and support them in their efforts. If we can't speak positively of our elected officials and public, then don't speak. Speak in fight, directly to those individuals that you have a problem with. These are all grown individuals. I'm sure they can take constructive criticism, but I believe they're all the be honorable people. And I know they must have really wanted to serve, because who in his right mind would pay money, stand for an election, go out and campaigning, get elected, coming here and put up with all the crap that we give them, the resources give them, if they didn't intend really in the service? So I think it's time that we get together, go find our way in the council, give them the opportunity to do what they came to do to serve, and just remember that elections have consequences.
Mr. Blain, order. Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Anyone else on citizens to be heard?
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Callicek.
George Callicek, I'm a resident of Lake Park, but I just wanted to let the residents know around the Long Pond area, we do now have nesting eagles, which I think is very, very great to have some American eagles around here in the city of Lake Park. I am in working with the Department of Natural Resources at the state level to come down here and do photographs and have this area set aside, so we can continue to have eagle nesting in the Harris Trail area. So just want to let you know, if anybody sees anybody from the DNR, I'm personally working with them to preserve these American eagles.
Thank you, Mr. Callicek. Anyone else on citizens to be heard? Yes, Mr. P.
Dan Beasley, two sixteen, Harris Trail. Yes, I am a citizen of City of Lakeport. Personally, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for some things I've seen done around town here. Maybe short time that the people have been again, I've seen a lot of work done in some digits to take care of some drainage issues that previous council was headed toward spending several thousands of dollars to do that's been taken care of. I've seen some trees that need to be trimmed, taken care of. I've seen some roadside that have been overgrown for years and years, nobody ever took any care of. I've seen potholes doing on the streets that never been taken care of. And just from personal observation from what I've seen here tonight, and what came out in the financial report, I don't believe that things were being done quite as they should have been done. Seems we have fifty, sixty, something thousand dollars in seed that we didn't know we had. So personally, I'd like to thank the council and the mayor. Thank you, Mr. P.
Anyone else on citizens to be heard? Yes, Mr. Blain.
And what we've always, I left a thousand eight hundred and fifty, this I want to compliment you all on the cleanup. Did I talk about this time?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay. Are there any consequences for people that don't clean up?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you legally able to mix?
We, the chief of police and the building inspector, I shouldn't get into conversation, but I'll answer your question, are in charge of enforcing ordinances, and we do have ordinances in Lake Park, several ordinances. We have, don't we have a substandard housing ordinance, Rob? And we also have ordinances against unkempt lots and people not mowing the grass or leaving unsightly items on their property.
How big can a personal yard be in trash or be?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Ms. Blain said. I think it's a decision that the officer that would send the report, the report or the request out, that was.
What do you all do about abandoned property?
We are, we're getting into this, and we're new, and we're going to make decisions on that, it's like we are making decisions on people that they owe, in fact, property taxes. But there are some, there are some unsightly areas in Lake Park, Georgia, and I for one, and the council members that I've talked to, we want to clean up. We want to clean up, and we want to ask people to clean up.
How long do we have to clean up?
Yeah, February to do that, and that's on our next agenda item, and we'll be talking about it more.
And all of you are going to be responsible for this?
Yes, it says in your letter on behalf of the Lake Park City Council.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Blain. Anyone else on citizens to be heard? At this time, I'm going to close, citizens to be heard.
Mayor, I would like to recognize.
Yes, Mr. General. Sure. Sure. So you're under citizens to be heard?
The recent events of January third city council meeting concerning the motion to not reappoint our city clerk, Ms. Ann Peterson, a fire chief, Burke Ruffin, and a fire chief, David Brown, are my opinion, a disturbance to our cities and our citizens. It's not so much that they were relieved of their positions, but rather the fact that the names of the appointments were at your fingertips, ready to replace them with no explanation as to why. When I asked if there was a meeting I might have missed concerning these positions, I was told it was out in the net. There was no prior discussion. If this was the truth, then why was Tim Baker not only present at the council meeting in a dressed in a Lake Park police officer's uniform before being appointed? The vote taken to appoint a new officer was a tie by council members and was affirmed by Mayor Ben Futch. Obviously, Mr. Tim Baker was informed that he had this appointment even before council had a vote to appoint a police chief. This was an appointment I had no knowledge of prior to a motion being made. Perhaps it was because I was well aware of Tim's shortcomings, and Mr. Futch, Ms. Sherrill, and Mr. Lane were well aware of my feelings. Because of this, I feel there was a collaboration between councilman Lane, councilman Sherrill, and Mayor Ben Futch, prior to and after the taking of both, both of office. Also, I would like to add that in my opinion, the removal of Ms. Ann Peterson was a reckless, unethical act based on assumptions and indebtedness. It was a misfeasance and malfeasance. I still have no answers to why Ms. Peterson was not reappointed. All I got were whispers of it needed to be done. We were told a forensic audit was going to be performed. If there was a question of Ms. Ann's integrity, then why was she not afforded the right to be presumed innocent? Would I have not been more prudent to keep her in the position so she could be accountable? Surely she could have answered any questions that were raised and city hall would not have fallen into such a disarray? Suspicions would have been severely avoided. A motion was made to replace Ms. Ann with interim Ms. Beth Sims. Again, I was not informed of this person, her qualifications, et cetera. The same thing happened with our fire chief, David Brown, a certified firefighter, when he was replaced by Tim Baker, who is not a certified firefighter. So now we have a police chief who is also our fire chief. As I previously stated, these two distinct positions, in my opinion, when combined, leave the citizens very vulnerable. I would also like to add that Mr. Tim Baker was our fire chief in the past, and was relieved of duty due to his lack of leadership, failure to report to the city council, not keeping records, and the general disarray of the fire department. Furthermore, all of our first responders quit as a result of the dismissal of Chief Brown, leaving our elderly a lot more vulnerable if there is a medical emergency. I was very dismayed at the list of motions and multiple group names and seconding of motions rolling off the tongue of councilman Lane, and just as fast being seconded by councilwoman Sherrill for appointments to the ethics committee and border zoning appeals. Once again, I was told that I was not left out of any process of decisions concerning these obviously pre-planned appointments. In my opinion, perhaps if this newly-appointed mayor and council had attended mayor or council school first, they might have had a better understanding of governmental policy and order. For example, a work session was called for the council the following Thursday, and it was posted that such, a work session, which then turned into an open meeting unannounced to the public at the previous council meeting. While not being able to change a meeting twenty-four hours before it started, it was inappropriate, for not even I was told about the change at the previous council meeting. However, because of council's haste in replacing key personnel in our city government, I made a motion to go into executive session so these personnel could be paid. I left this meeting feeling very uncomfortable, having been forced to call an emergency session based on the actions of a hastily inexperienced council. In my heart, I felt it would serve the city by having salaries for the newly hastily-appointed employees and temporary help. There was no agenda posted, as there should be with all of the meetings twenty-four hours before. As a result, very few citizens were aware of this forum, and most citizens did not show up. This is far from the transparency promised of the citizens of Lake Park. It is precisely because of these irregularities and some things I choose not to discuss in this letter, and the blatant disregard for the city charter and rock tools of order, that I must tender my resignation immediately. This resignation does not come easy for me. I will not compromise my morals by actively participating in this administration. in this administration's endeavors as it goes directly against my commitments to the citizens of Lake Park. For those who have supported me as a council member, I say thank you. It's been a humbling pleasure and honor to serve the citizens of Lake Park as a council member and as mayor for ten for the last six years. Perhaps I can return at a future date to serve the citizens of Lake Park, Georgia.
Order, please. Anyone else on the citizens to be heard?
Mayor, I'd like to be heard.
Yes, Mr. Carter.
I'm not going to be as linked as Mr. Schiller. Uh, here, Mayor and the council, I've been thinking, I've been thinking about the events of the January third city council meeting with Lake Park. After much time of thought, I have decided to step down to the city council. I cannot in good conscience be a part of the city council and may act so recklessly as to place the city in jeopardy, to remove the city clerk who single-handedly remain, run day-to-day operations with no conscience and broken ambitions. Stay on council will make me complicit. I could not live with myself. I want to thank the citizens of Lake Park for their honor and privilege to work for you. Uh, my resignation. Being that there is a lack of a forum here, city business is now, uh, closed, any new city business is closed, this meeting is adjourned.
Ladies and, ladies and gentlemen, we do not have a forum. This bid, this, this meeting is adjourned. We will call you later, uh, next, next meeting. There is one issue we can. Oh, oh, y'all, hold on, any questions, Mr. Callicek? Hold on a second. There is one issue that we can handle at this time, since we have the charter, since we now have, uh, two vacant seats. We do have to call for a special election. So at this time, I would like to have the call to, uh, the election board to set up our special election for two vacant seats that were vacated after the present time. Can we do that? That's not a motion. Order, please. Do you have any, any questions? We're, we're adjourned. Did you understand what's on the council land? Calling for the light.
Can we, can we just be quiet so we can hear what's being said? Could you just, if you want to talk, could you go outside? It's just really hard to conduct business when all the chatter is going on, and I think there are people here that would like to hear what's happening.
Officer Kenzie, would you please?
Sure.
Have order out, out there, in the hall and outside, please. Chief Baker, would you assist?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The one action you are allowed to take without a quorum is to take steps to get a quorum, which in this case would have called, calling a special election until May. And I don't know exactly when that would be, but I believe it would probably fall in June because of, since the next field of special election. Or then after the, it leaves you enough time to be mauling.
Can I talk with Ms. Mullis about the February cleanup? I mean, we can't vote on anything. It's not, it's not a meeting, but I, I'd like to explain what you were asking about cleanup. Do you mind?
No, I would like to show you how the design that, that we don't give down muscles.
Yes, so what he'll do is he'll contact, uh, the election board, tell them that we've had two seats vacated as of tonight, that we need to start motion for having a special election, um, that'll need, get notice in the paper for that election, uh, and give, the election board will state, you know, when qualifications will be, uh, you know, when, uh, just, you know, get the whole process started. We will be able, the city will be able to conduct business, um, you know, pay bills, uh, send out water bills, those types of things. City Hall will still be open. Um, the one thing that, that won't happen is without a forum, the city council won't be able to meet, and basically that's where we'll be until after, or until we can, uh, seat the, uh, people that are elected after.
While we're here, we've got the lawyer here. We can, uh, we'll, we'll operate. The city will operate and we, uh, we can't, naturally we can't have a meeting, so we can't vote on anything. And if you expect to hear anything like that, but we can operate under our, under our budget. Is that correct?
That's right.
So we can operate on the budget items, which will, which will keep us afloat.
Ordinary day-to-day activities that don't require council action.
And, uh, I've already had many conversations with you in the past thirty days, and I'll probably have some more. We can't, this, this eliminates having us and having to pay a lawyer bill.
You wish.
Ms. Mullis, forgive me. Bobby, I've known you all my life.
Absolutely.
Um, yes, we are having the February cleanup. Uh, that was announced last meeting, late into the meeting when some of y'all were gone. We have three dumpsters, uh, over here on the vacant lot across from the fire department. One of them, one of them is labeled iron. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, I just want this cleanup to apply to everyone.
Ms. Mullis, Ms. Mullis, this, we're inviting everyone, and we're going, and we are going to, to, to do that.
I participated in the cleanup one day, out way around Lake Park picking up.
Right, right. I, I know how you keep your property, and I wish everyone else to do it.
I would do it in my neighborhood, I would say. Yeah, our neighborhood is disgraceful, yes.
Anyway, the containers are there. When they're full for the month of February, when the containers get full, we will send them out again, we'll bring double in, and we are going to assist people up the, uh, senior citizens or folk who might need some assistance in cleaning up their stuff. We're going to assist them. We've already had some calls. We've got a name on a list, and in the month of February, we're going to go help. We're gonna, we're gonna get some, uh, we're gonna get some, 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 uh, ditches cleaned out that need cleaning out now. Uh, there's some, there's some, a former councilman who was just here, uh, is going to clean out his ditch, too. But there, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of things. We're gonna clean up the best we can. We're gonna try to get everyone to.